He's an island unto himself.
Yeah.
We're live from Lewiston City Hall.
You can't see that far.
No, I thought I can't see that far. Can you read the red versus the black? Okay, I call this meeting to order. My name is Mark Roy. I'm the vice chair of the Lewiston Planning Board. I welcome everyone to this meeting and call it to order. Lucy, if you don't mind doing a roll call, please.
Absolutely. Roger Dupree.
Here.
Michael Markot is absent. Lucy Bisson here. Mark Roy.
Here.
Amy Smith.
Here.
Alexander Pine.
Here.
Penthea Burns.
Here.
Zoe Lindstrom. And in city staff, we have Shelley Norton, the deputy director, and Jonathan Connor, the director. Sorry?
No, that's all right. Zoe Lindstrom is here. So we have two missing. So both Penthea and Zoe are voting tonight. Are there any adjustments to the agenda?
No.
Okay. Is there any correspondence?
I just want to remind the board that next week is the Historic Preservation Review Board's annual awards on Thursday afternoon. You were sent an email invitation. They are also hosting two visits to historic properties. So on Thursday afternoon, there's a visit to the... Oh, what's it called?
Pickerhouse.
Pickerhouse lot. Thank you. And then on Thursday after the awards, there'll be a visit to Wedgewood. So I can forward the email again, which has the actual times, but I just went to remind folks. That's the only correspondence.
Okay.
You're going to send out reminders to us?
Yes, I can do that, Roger.
Thank you.
All righty. We don't have any public hearings tonight. Other business. Teradyne Consultants, on behalf of Aegean Development, has submitted a development approval extension request for the development of an apartment building at 55 Middle Street, which was approved on August 14, 2023.
For the record, Michael Markot has a...
Well, then, I guess, Zoe, you are not voting tonight. It's Penthea's turn. So do we want to take it away with the Teradyne Consultants?
Yes. So this project, many of you were on the board when it was approved two years ago on August 14 of 2023. Just a little background, it is a six-story apartment building with a... At that point, they got approval for 150 dwelling units. And they're... They had received a number of waivers, as you recall, but at this point, they're really just asking for an extension of approval, which would allow them to start construction for another two years. They did mention in their application that they do plan on coming in for an amendment, which will probably be happening in the next couple of months. We've been speaking with them. So there are a couple minor changes that they want to make, but at this point in time, they just want the extension of approval, so they have time to come back for the amendment. So if granted, the extension would bring them through till August 14 of 2027 to start construction, and the applicant is here if you have questions for him.
Okay. Does anyone on the board have any questions or comments? Mr. Mark?
I was just wondering. I thought I remember reading something about there's been changes along the way since the last approval.
So they are... At this point, they haven't constructed anything, and they haven't come in for any amendments. But there are some plans that they have for changing some things about the footprint of the building.
So that's probably what I was reading.
So that would be the amendment that they'd be coming in for.
Okay. I thought I read that it was something that had been changing during the process, probably at staff level.
I think in their minds, it's been changing, and they've been designing it, but they haven't come to the city.
As the amendment.
Yeah.
Okay.
Any other comments, questions for either developer or staff? No? Okay, I'm going to be looking for a motion.
In that case, I'll make a motion pursuant to Article 13, Section 11 of the Zoning and Land Use Code to grant a two-year extension of the August 14, 2023 Development Review Approval to Aegean Development LLC for the development review of 55 Middle Street until August 14, 2027 to start construction.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion on this?
Roger has a question.
Oh, I'm sorry, Roger?
Shelley, can you bring us up to date as far as the meeting ahead on the 21st with Public Works is due, always discussed?
Yes. So we did meet a week or two ago with the owner and the engineer for the project. At that time, so in the last two years, the consultant that Mr. Leveque is working with has changed. So it was a new civil engineer for this project that we were talking to. So he had some general questions for Public Works about utilities in the area, what was in the street, that sort of thing that we went over. And then we also talked about... There's a portion of the Riverwalk that would actually wrap around Mr. Leveque's parking garage property. And so we talked about easements that the city would be hoping to have, and they're very open to that. So the intent is that we would actually probably get those easements put together on a plan during this amendment process. So that was one of the reasons for the conversation. They also have an interest... You'll remember, two years ago, the owner had an interest in seeing some streetscape changes. At that point in time, the city really wasn't at a place where we were ready to design or entertain that yet. So we did talk about that a little bit with engineering as well. So those were the things that we talked about at the meeting.
Of the nine conditions that were presented, how many of those have been completed?
So a couple of those were items we were discussing at that meeting, and they're hoping to address some of those in the amendment, and some of them will probably still be conditions of approval for the amendment.
Have we got any records on file as far as floods in that area? I mean, have you got anything?
I'm not... I don't have that information tonight, I'm sorry. I don't believe...
Has that ever taken into consideration when this thing went through?
I don't believe they're in the floodplain, but I don't know about historic, and yeah, if you want to share. Do you mind going to the microphone?
Identify yourself.
Say again?
Identify yourself with your name and...
I have my ID. Jason Leveque, owner of 55 Middle Street and 26 Chapel Street, which is a parking garage adjacent. We just completed all of our third-party reports on environmental. It is none... The property is not in a floodplain, hundred-year or otherwise.
Now that everything is going lack of with the weather, is there a probability or possibility that could happen?
It would probably be no. Well, it would be the least thing Lewiston would worry about if that property flooded, because the rest of the city would flood as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody have any other questions or comments? Mr. Markot?
That subject reminded me of another aspect that I remembered from this weekend, but I don't have total recall on how it played in. There was some discussion about runoff sewage... Stormwater, I should say, not sewage. Stormwater releasing back into the andro between the garage and the new project. I just don't remember... Maybe somebody can clarify for me. Did it have to do with this project? Was it something else? I know that when it was all said and done, I was not happy with the final verdict. And it was... And what surprised me was I was looking at it from probably more of an environmentalist point of view than most of the other board members at the time.
As far as I'm aware, during the last approval process and the process that we're doing now, that has never come up with either city staff or our engineers. Frankly, that would have come up during our FEMA and HUD analysis. So as far as we're known, there is no issue tying into existing surface water runoff.
Yeah, I don't know if it had to do... During your development review, or if we were addressing a separate issue with respect to the streetscapes, the parking garage, or what. But I believe that it's allowed to be released into the area in between and behind. I call it a back bay.
Yes. Yeah, you're right. So we do have a provision in the ordinance where when you're that close to the Andersgoggin River, you can directly discharge your stormwater to the river. And that is approval that the Public Works Director can grant. So that was granted, I believe, with that prior project.
That was part of the discussion two years ago.
Yeah.
So that's where I'm remembering it from?
Yeah, I believe that's what you're remembering, Michael.
Because I was sitting right here next to Josh and Jean at the time, and I think we both were concerned, but I took a harder stance than Josh, if I remember correctly. I didn't like the idea of the release. And hearing Roger mention the issues with a lot of flooding and some roads caving and so forth, that's a concern.
Alex?
I'll just say, yeah, I do remember that conversation. And basically, where we ended up is there's an existing catchment that it'll go into, and Public Works approved that, and it meets all of the rules.
Until the day the catchment fails.
Sure.
Roger, did you have something else?
Yeah, let's listen to you. Looking at the plan and how it's set up, was there any consideration taken as far as putting any type of buffer between the courtyard and the CMP substation?
I will say that you're looking at... That is the part that we're amending. A reversal of courtyard to be more street-focused on both buildings, which will be one parcel when it's all done, thereby allowing us to do that buffer with the CMP substation.
What type of foliage are we looking at?
We're going to be working with the city arborist to make sure that it's shade-resistant or shade-tolerant, I believe is the correct term, considering the angle of the sun.
Thank you.
Can you define shade-resistant or tolerant?
No. I'm not an arborist.
I'm just wondering what... I mean, you want to have shade, but shade-resistant?
There's less sun because of the building. So if you're looking at any type of landscape green escape between the building itself and the CMP substation... Mr. Dupree, if I heard you correctly, I believe that's what you're mentioning. You have to make sure that it can thrive and survive in a very low-sun environment.
Okay. And that's why I was having a problem with the definition, because now it's thinking about providing shade in the area, but this is to not provide too much so that other growth...
It's to live in the shade.
So it can live in the shade.
Okay. Now I understand.
Zoe?
Yeah, that was actually pretty accurate from a forester's perspective. It's just, yeah, what kinds of vegetation are able to grow and thrive in a low-light environment? So I think you covered that well.
We're going to be working with the city arborist here to make sure that it's consistent with other plantings around the city as well, and provide the greatest type of barrier, if you would, without interfering with CMP's operation.
All right. Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, can I have a roll call, please?
Certainly. Roger Dupree.
Yes.
Michael Markot.
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes. Mark Roy.
Yes.
Amy Smith.
Yes.
Alexander Pine.
Yes.
Penthea Burns.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, next on the agenda, the planning board needs to be making a recommendation to the city council on the disposition of a group of city-owned properties, and we got a packet of those properties.
Okay. So a number of these properties have been tax-acquired in the last couple of years, and each one has an individual map that was provided, that lists the size, the value, the zoning district, the back taxes, and then any basic information we had about it as to what type of structure is on it or if it's vacant. If you have any questions.
I have a question. What's the possibilities with undevelopable lots?
Yeah. The challenge with that is really the best thing usually is for an abutter to merge it with existing property. Or occasionally, like a small parcel in the city might be used for parking for an adjacent building or something like that. But yeah, there's not a lot of... Not a lot that we can do or the public can do with it.
Thank you.
Any other questions, comments?
If you want to go first.
No, good.
No, Amy.
Oh, Amy, go ahead.
Yeah, go ahead, Amy.
So Shelley, just a question. So I'm looking at all these different lots, and at 32 Horton Street, acquired 2023, it says undersized lot.
Yes.
According to what?
Our zoning in that area, so there's a minimum size for buildability. If the city was to change that, it might become buildable, or if we changed our non-conforming language in our ordinance to allow undersized lots to be built, then it could be developable in the future. But at this moment in time, it's not under the current ordinance.
Okay, so somebody who is interested in that lot would need to just buy it and hope for the best, because then they'd have to go through a process to try to figure out whether they could get a waiver.
Make it parking, make it a garden.
Yep.
Anything without a structure.
That's right. Yep. Yeah. Thanks.
Yeah, but with the new acquisition of the infill, you know, as far as tiny houses, that would be an ideal location.
It would have to be... So if it's vacant and not buildable, then it wouldn't... It would still have to be merged with a larger... Another piece of land to make it buildable, unfortunately. So you're right, if we were to make changes and allow smaller lots to be built on, then that would open up more opportunity for some of these lots to be buildable. So that's a discussion possibly for the board to have at some point.
Yeah.
For an ordinance change.
I have a question, and I don't know if you know this. When they go to... When the realtor goes and sells it, or when the agent sells it for the city, is it just as quickly as possible? Or are they trying to get as high a price as possible? Because the city doesn't benefit from as high as a price, right?
Yeah, so I think the council approves the sales, so I'm not sure kind of what their thought process is on a case-by-case basis. But you're right, with the state law changes, there isn't really a benefit to the city for the sale.
Right.
The agent has to market it at market value. So they'll do his... Just like he would for your home. He would come out and do a cost comparison, find out the market value for the property, and that's what the city will approve, the listing price, and they'll go from there.
Right. But I mean, is it just as quickly as possible as you can sell it? Because at that point, it would be a different process, right? I mean, it wouldn't be a competitive bidding. It would be first-come, first-serve, wouldn't it? In terms of the sale?
I mean, they're selling it as fast as possible, but it's going through the open market as any other property would. There's no more selling on the steps of city hallings like that.
Right, it wouldn't be a bid process, right? There wouldn't be a competitive... Oh, well, I got another bidder who's going to give me $5,000 more for this process.
Well, there could be. It's a normal real estate transaction. So if three bidders put, you know, an offer in on it, the city would have to look at that.
I wonder why.
And I would assume that for the council, because they're approving the sale, they're also maybe looking at what the use... Or, you know, if the seller has proposed something. Is that right?
It depends on the parcel. Yeah, sometimes there's an interest in what the proposal is, for sure. Some of these properties, probably less so, would just be thrilled if somebody wanted them.
Well, I know if I'm interested in one of these properties, and I'm the first one to bid on it, and I bid on it at the asking price, and then somebody comes in behind me, and there is no reason for the town... For the city to wait for a second offer. Right? Even for one minute to wait for a second offer. The fact that it waits for a second offer or even takes a second offer, I think, would deprive me of something of value, and then would open up the city to a lawsuit.
I believe it has to be made in an executive session, so the council will take all of them in an executive session. So it will take some time.
I'm just saying, I'm just thinking out loud, right? Because of the new... Because of that law, right? Doesn't that put cities kind of at risk now of taking competitive bids? Before, they had a reason to take a competitive bid. They had a reason because the incentive was to get as high of a bid as possible. Now, that goes away. If there's no reason to take a bid, it must be first-come, first-serve, I would think. Whoever bids first.
This seems...
Because otherwise, you're depriving the person who came first for meeting all of the other requirements. I can pay for it. I have the money. I can buy it. Why would you say that you're going to wait for somebody even for one second and give it to somebody else if I've met the requirements?
This sounds like... I think this is an interesting question, and I would...
I mean, I might wiggle off into a wiggle question.
Could we have staff bring this to the council and maybe get a response? Is that the right process? I don't know. I mean, I hear what you're saying, but like, I think at the same time, we have our little chunk of the process here.
Yeah, no, no, this is...
And that's outside of this.
No, obviously, it's going outside, but I was just thinking about it. I'm like, hmm.
I mean, I think they look at them as a case-by-case basis, and I really don't know what their process is. I'm not sure that it's... I don't know as it's a consistent process.
Yeah, I know. I just thought of it myself just now.
It is not a consistent process. At least historically, there's at least three methodologies that the city can use. They weren't outlined here, and I don't... I can't recall them well enough to just regurgitate them. But I can tell you that one of the ones during my tenure in the city council, it went out to bid. And part of the bid process was not only what was the offer, but what were you going to do with it? And the city had the ability to make a decision, not based on highest offer, based on what's going to happen to it. It was a split council vote in the end, and a budding tenement landlord wanted it. And across the street, it was a public-private enterprise, and the administrator at the time wanted to give it to the public-private and council. I was on the winning side, because the abutters who owned tenements, maybe three tenements, needed the parking, and his price tag was better, too. I believe it was a giveaway to the across-the-street public-private. So there are different methodologies, and like it does say in the memo, to the planning board, the board has the right to review the proposed use of the property, to take into consideration in making our recommendation today, proposed use of the property, value of any proposed improvements to the property, the impact of the sale or lease of the property on its asset value to the adjacent property in the same ownership, and the extent to which the sale or lease will support overall city policy. That's the big one. With respect to the planning board, comprehensive plan is the IE in the area, neighborhood within the property located. Interestingly enough, I've probably got a dozen questions across these dozen items, but interestingly enough, I had notes on 32 Horton Street. I was looking at the parcel. I noticed it was an undersized lot, which is probably equivalent to unbuildable. And I'm saying, combined in two buildings on same lot? That kind of goes hand in hand with, what, LD 2003, if I remember right, where if somebody was to propose that they wanted to purchase the lot, an abutter who wanted to build on it, whether it was just parking, whether it was another building, where you can now have two buildings on one lot, that would all be permissible. And my overall concern, as some board members are aware, again and again and again, is the taxes due. I would like to see the city recover taxes due, under the impression that taxes are no longer accruing. These are frozen numbers, I would assume. And I don't think it's unreasonable on most of them. There was one that kind of caught my attention. How did it get to $56,000? And that's it says it's a buildable lot. Maybe it's the height of the... Because it doesn't actually say, or at least I can't see the dimensions. So maybe the dimensions are within buildable dimensions, where the other one at 32 Horton Street apparently was not. So those are all considerations. We can make a suggestion. Doesn't have to be hard and fast. It could be just a suggestion to the city council that they should try to recover the taxes due in the process, not just give this away. Because that's what happens a lot of times. It's a giveaway. We have budget concerns in this community, and if these properties are not accruing any additional taxes, we should try to maximize what we sell them for, whether we're selling them because somebody's interested, and that's the way they go. I believe that's one of the options. Bid option is another RFP. They can use a realtor. They don't have to use a realtor. I mean, all those are spelled out somewhere.
And that process isn't really used for tax-acquired property anymore because of the new state law, so it has to go through a realtor, generally speaking, at this point in time.
Tax-acquired has to go through a realtor.
Yes.
So those other options have been made moot in recent years?
Yes. Correct. And there's no point to selling it at... That's the whole point. That was my whole point of the conversation, right? There's no point in selling it at any higher price than the first price that you get, because any excess beyond the taxes due and reasonable sales costs have to be remitted back to the prior owner. You can't get... The city doesn't get anything beyond the taxes. So, for example, you know, this one that says taxes due $11,000, that's all we're getting. So even though we sell it for $125,000 or $160,000, we're only getting $12,000 plus reasonable costs.
I would hope to get the $11,000 then.
Well, yeah, no, that's what we're getting. That's what we're getting.
Well, not necessarily. I've seen them, especially in a bid process. You end up selling something for a couple pennies on the dollar, and the argument is, well, we're putting it back on the tax rolls.
Correct. That's the point.
Yeah, but that's the responsibility of the city.
The city council's responsibility.
As long as you sell this for any of these properties, for at least the taxes due plus reasonable costs, the town... The city will make its money back. That's it.
And that's what I'm shooting for, is that number. I mean, I didn't know about remitting back months above. It makes sense that somebody came up with that concept.
Well, it was a recent Supreme Court case, main Supreme Court case, a couple years ago.
It only makes sense, because I know that some Lewiston property taxpayers have gotten abused in the past in such situations.
Shelley, do you know if the realtor has the ability to negotiate with the abutters as far as the property, like Horton Street, like you've got two abutters on each side? If he was or she was to approach both of them, split it in half, you take half and I take half? Do you know how that would work?
I don't know.
I do know that the realtor is marketing the property as if we were any other homeowner or landowner. So they are going to... You know, they get paid when they make a sale. And so they are... They're going to market it. They're going to do flyers, just like a normal realtor would, to the abutters to try to find somebody to buy the property. It'll be on the MLS. It'll be in the little booklets. It's going to be marketed to the masses. So however he can get the property sold, that's his job, and that's what he'll do. How he does it, the city doesn't get involved. That's why we have an MOU with the realtor to let him do his professional job.
But is there a priority? In other words, they approach the abutters first before they put it out to bid?
How the realtor does it, we don't... We're not privy to.
That means nothing in the city?
I don't know what the contract or the MOU with the realtor states. I doubt it would get that granular, though.
Amy, did you have something?
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify. So wherever it says taxes due, that is sort of the minimum sales price for it, because that comes back to the city. So the purchaser has to pay the back taxes plus the value of the property. Is that correct?
That's the maximum that the city can retain.
That's the, that's the maximum that the city can retain, plus reasonable fees.
The, the way you describe it, I would not describe it that way. So the, the new purchaser does not have to pay back the taxes. For, for all intents and purposes, if the owed amount of taxes was twenty thousand, and the city got no offers, no bids, and the only bid they got was ten thousand, that's what the city gets, is ten thousand, they would have to eat the remainder, basically. So it's not, the, the new buyer has to pay those taxes. It's, the city gets what it can out of it. And they'll put it towards the back taxes, any remainder, like Mark said, minus reasonable costs. Will go back to the previous owner.
I see, so in essence, let's just say that they, they pay more than the back taxes. What's happening is the new buyer is paying the backs taxes for the old owner and giving them whatever is left over. It's like a net, the, the back taxes are still paid by the previous owner, assuming that the new sales price is more than the back taxes.
No, no, the technicality is the, the city owns these properties. The, the prior owner does not own these properties anymore. The city owns these properties, the city is selling these properties that it owns. You, as the buyer, are buying it from the city. The city is then satisfying the prior taxes and then will remit the excess to the prior owner.
To the prior owner?
If there is.
But that has nothing to do with the, the new owner, the new owner has nothing to do with the prior owner. And the, and the, the new owner has nothing to do with the prior taxes due.
But then, the prior owner still gets money from the transaction.
That's correct.
If, if, if it's above the taxes due.
And that is by statute.
Right, and that's the new statute, okay, thank you so much.
And, and the city eats it if it's less.
Correct.
Correct.
And my understanding is that if the city wants to accept that amount, that's less.
Correct.
They're not mandated to take less.
Correct. Any other comments, questions?
I was just hoping that we could maybe re-center on the action that's in front of us of disposition. I think this has been a really interesting conversation in terms of sort of exploring pathways, but I question whether or not it, it makes it, like, I guess if, if it makes a difference to the members of how they're gonna vote on disposition here, we can continue it, but I, I think it would be nice to, to get to it here.
Yeah, so I'm looking for a motion.
Is there any review that staff was going to do of the properties, or are we just looking to make a motion on this?
Uh, just a motion, yeah.
Okay, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion pursuant to Article seven, Section four H of the Zoning and Land Use Code, to send a favorable recommendation to the city council for the disposition of the attached properties as, as attached.
Do we have any other comments or questions before?
We need a second first.
Oh, I'm sorry, yes, I'm sorry.
A second.
Okay.
Michael seconds it, do we have any comments or questions before we vote?
Yeah, I, I was intrigued by twenty-one Goodall Street, where is that located? I meant to look it up, and didn't have a chance today.
Oh, I did look it up.
There you go.
It's a doubter of Sabatys out of Lisbon.
Here it is. No, that's not the right one, sorry.
So it's in a series of paper streets, um.
Behind where?
Well, Pond Road and Grove Street.
Okay, Pond and Grove.
Yeah, back in here.
Those paper streets, yeah. No, it says no frontage, but it, it looks pretty sorry parcel of land. If you, if there were roads in there, how would you get around the environmentals on that stream? Which takes up a pretty good portion of the parcel.
Michael, can you use your microphone more, I've got a blow right back me, and I can't really hear you.
Okay, I, I was just saying that the parcel looks pretty sad from the perspective of, from environmentals, even if it wasn't for the fact that it was landlocked by non-streets.
Any other comments, questions, Alex?
For fourteen ninety-nine Main Street, it says unbuildable lot with no legal frontage. It looks like there's an existing structure on there. Would that allow anyone who purchases it to do things with that existing structure? Or is it, you know, so dilapidated that it's no longer considered a structure?
So that particular structure is in the process of going through a dangerous building hearing.
Got it.
We're getting bids tomorrow to have it taken down.
Amy, did you have something?
Nope.
All right, if I don't, if we don't have any other comments, we can take a roll.
Okay. Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markon?
Yes.
Lucy Bisson, yes, Mark Roy?
Yes.
Excuse me, Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexander Pine?
Yes.
Penthea Burns?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that passes. Item number five C, the planning board providing guidance to the city council on locations where licensed syringe service programs can operate.
Okay, thank you. You all should have received my memo in your packets. I won't read it verbatim, but for those that may not have already read it. So basically, uh, council has asked, you know, a council member has asked for this ordinance, and it has gone to a few workshops. I don't know if any of you have been following the city council meetings or workshops. So we, we've gone through a few drafts, a few iterations of it. We've had workshops with some of the providers, the local providers have, have spoken. I believe we have some in the audience tonight, good to see them here. And so one of the items that came up from the, from the workshops that we've had was the draft ordinance spoke to restricting or permitting needle exchange ordinance, uh, I'm sorry, needle exchange providers to certain districts, certain locations within the city. So we came up with an initial draft. We, we kind of based it off of the language around the license for the methadone clinic out on Molleson Way in that area. That was a start. And then the council looked at the original map and noticed that it was very, very, very prohibitive when you threw in a thousand-foot buffers from parks, schools, daycares, the, the libraries. It was very restrictive, so they asked us to, to relook at it. We did, we came up with the, um, the map that you see here, and what's in the, what's in your memo there, where it would, it would permit needle exchange providers to the highway business zone, community business, neighborhood business, urban enterprise, and industrial. And it reduced the, the buffers to, I believe it was five hundred feet from schools and daycares. And when you plug those in, this is the map that you get. So it would basically permit providers to operate in any of the white areas. So the, the greens and the blues would be prohibited based off of proximity to a school or a daycare. The red are the zones that would primarily be residential or downtown business, if you will. Those were the, those were the primary concerns that we heard from, from, you know, the counselors, is they, they want to keep it away from residential areas, and they want it to remain as business-friendly in the community as possible. So as part of the workshop, excuse me, for licensing, you know, the council asked me to bring this to the planning board, to get your professional opinions on it, to weigh in on it, where, where you stood, where you guys thought it, it should go, and, and give a recommendation that we can take back to the council during the next workshop, and, and present a more cleaned-up version of the, of the draft ordinance. So that's where we're at tonight.
Okay, um, any, well, I see some, so I'll start with Zoe.
Um, could you please clarify what change was made to the map? I understand that the buffers are now five hundred feet down from a thousand, was there any other change?
Yes, so if you look at the, on the background part of the memo, that was the original, so the original draft permitted SSPs only to the highway business, the mill, Suntraville, and the community business. And then it had the thousand-foot buffers. So those were the, those were the private, the previous districts where they were permitted. And now it's flipped, if you will. Did you see that on the memo?
I do see it in the memo, but it would be helpful to see it visually, because I'm not as familiar with the districts yet myself.
Gotcha, so we, we had a map that we presented to them. I don't have that map here, simply because we were going off of the, the latest draft that the council had.
Okay.
It was similar to this. It was more restrictive in the corridors, if you.
We can pull it off the website.
Let's see here, so if you, if you look at this map, this whole area on the outer Main Street corridor was basically prohibited. The majority of the Sabatys Street corridor was prohibited. There was a few spots down here in the, in the lower area of downtown that were permitted. The majority of this out here by the, by the I ninety-five off-ramp was permitted. So this didn't change much, other than the, you know, the, the buffer circles. But it was, it was all, I know this may not look like a lot, all of this white area, but the, the previous one was even less.
Okay, yeah, thank you very much for sort of describing that.
And I apologize for not having the, the previous map, I, I could have printed that.
But it sounds like by and large, if we're just gonna kind of summarize, the Main Street and Sabatys Street corridors where it is permitted now were essentially not previously. Okay, thank you for clarifying.
Yep.
And it's really not any, any, anything really downtown. It's mostly outer Sabatys Street and mostly outer Lisbon Street from the promenade mall back, right?
Let's see if I can do this here. Uh, this is from the website, I apologize, it's gonna get granular. So the downtown area, um, let's see, over by this.
Are there white areas in there?
In the downtown, very, very little, I think there's some down in the lower part of Sabatys, uh, I'm sorry, Bartlett, right down in this region here.
That's all blue.
Yeah, it, it looks blue on this, on this map.
It looks blue because of the schools and stuff, I think. It looks all blue on, on our map here. It doesn't show so much on, on that one, but it does on, on this little one that we have.
Let me see, Pepper, Pepper Mill is white, but the yard is blue, and everything else is green.
Give you a little better representation here.
I guess that's fine.
There we go.
There you go, so, yep, that's correct, so that down in the Bartlett Street area.
Well, that's the mosque in that area.
Yeah, that's the blue. So a little bit off of, basically, outer Lisbon Street from East Avenue out. Outer Sabatys Street from East Avenue out. Outer Main Street just before the Russell Street overpass, and then from Russell Street out, minus the, the buffers there between, for those, I believe those are daycares.
So I would think the likeliest location, given the homeless population, would probably be on Main Street.
Riverside Park area.
Yeah.
So as it stands right now, just for, just for clarity, the, we have two operators in the city, for those that don't know. One current operator is, let's see here, where's Park? Middle Blake, so one is right here. The other is right here. Correct me if I'm wrong, that's where you guys are at.
So what would, what would happen with the one that's?
So that's, that's part of the language that the council is going through right now. That's some of the stuff that we're working through with the, with the city attorney and the licensing authority, which is the city clerks, is, is what kind of language do you put in there? If, if you, for all intents and purposes, zone out one of the providers that are currently there, do you give them a timeframe to find a new location? And so that's, that's one of the things that they're working through right now.
Okay, Alex?
So, you know, since the planning board, you know, typically, we're looking at things in terms of land use, right? What impact is the building going to have? What sort of services, whether that's transportation or utilities, will that type of industry need? And, you know, what are those uses gonna have in terms of impact? Traffic, you know, number of people going to the business. For me, I'm not too familiar with this, and I'm wondering if staff could sort of talk about the general needs of a service provider like this? What clientele tend to use these services? And what sort of, what, what does the facility look like? I mean, now that you've pointed them out, I think I can sort of imagine it, but I think that would be helpful in, in grounding our discussion strictly in land use.
Yeah, so obviously, you've got, again, two providers. One is the Church of Safe Injection off of Main Street. I would presume that by and large, a lot of their clientele is walk-up. The second provider is Spurwink, which is on outer Lisbon Street. And, and I would, I would invite them to, to speak as well, if, if the, if the board would allow. I've had discussions with Spurwink, and, you know, they're right on a bus route. They have a bus stop right out front of their, their property. I, I believe they've had a lot of more foot traffic since the Church of Safe Injection has been closed down for several months. So by and large, I would, I would presume, but I can be corrected if I'm wrong, that the majority of the, of the traffic is foot traffic.
Lucy?
I kind of have a question that, that relates to that. It's, um, if it's foot traffic and you're sticking them out in the boonies, to be honest, you know, how the heck are these people supposed to get there? And, and, you know, that, that's, that's my problem with this, is it's not where these people are. And that, that's what I have a problem with. And I understand that downtown, it, it's, it's causing difficulties, and, and I understand that. But the problem is where we're ending up putting them. We're doing the same thing as we tried to do a couple of years ago with the shelter. We're putting it where it doesn't belong, where, I shouldn't say doesn't belong, where it, it's not meeting the need. And I think that's the problem, that, that we're trying to stick these, these services where people can't get to them efficiently.
Well, I thought the same thing, and in, in speaking with Spurwink, that was my question to them, was since the Church of Safe Injection has been closed down, have your numbers increased? And they answered in the affirmative, that their numbers have increased exponentially. And so people are finding their way to get to Spurwink, which I wouldn't say that's in the boonies. It's much further out than Main Street. But they, they have found their way to, to get to that provider. If that is the sole provider in town, you know, customers found their way to get there.
Yeah, if it, if it would be possible to, again, ground this in, you know, I think we're making some assumptions on who's using the service, and I'd love, I, you know, I don't know what our rules are, because this isn't a public hearing, right, it's other business.
No, it's not a public.
It's not a public.
Yeah, no, that's what I'm saying, it's not a public hearing, so we don't, we don't really have a formal process for comment. But I think, again, making sure that our assumptions around what the building needs to provide in terms of physical access, what sort of the nature of the business is, you know, are people popping in once a month, are people, you know, what, what, what is the intensity of the use? I think could be really helpful in grounding this conversation, again, in how the building and the land's being used, and that's where our recommendation really. In how the building and the land's being used. And that's where our recommendation really ought to come from.
Mr. Markup?
I have a lot of concerns here. I'll just add out by saying I prefer a no tolerance to syringes, period. When I saw the nature of, I guess this could be considered a limitation from, uh, what exists previously or currently. But when I see our corridors being used, uh, it concerns me. This is the image of Lewiston for outsiders to see. And if we have foot traffic coming from downtown Lewiston. To eleven fifty-five Lisbon Street, where I used to work in that building, back when it was a bank cooperation center. That concerns me, walking through the neighborhoods of what was known as, um, the Holy Cross District of Lewiston. And as everybody here, I heard, most everybody here, I heard me say last year. When I had a family member who worked at a fast food establishment and got stuck by a needle. So I have concerns with, uh, the. What's the word? Disposition or the throwaway? The disposal, that's the word. Uh, the disposal of needles, of course, ideally if they want. To get more free needles, they should be bringing those back, right? That seems to be a part of the context here. But, um, there is a serious concern about, um, what happens along the route. At fast food restaurants, if you're doing your business, um, along the way and you're snacking at, you know, one of those establishments and you. Toss something in the trash for one of the poor employees to get stuck and go through six months of, um, processes and to make sure he doesn't have exotic diseases and so on and so forth. And, and then just the imagery of people, uh, coming in and out of Lewiston. We, we have seen. Or heard the stories of people who won't even travel downtown anymore. They don't want to come to Lewiston anymore. Because of various issues, whether it's the homelessness issue, which we seem to bill so that they will come. Seems to be that's what's happening now with syringes. We, we offer, therefore they come from wide and far because everything's free. That, that's a, a major, major concern. I mean, I haven't made my decision on how I'll vote and of course, any sort of motion is going to be, uh, something that's, uh. That comes out of this committee. It's not a canned one. It's not the ordinance coming back to us for final passage, which would happen at a later time. And by then it could be a totally different, uh, picture. It could mutate. Apparently it's been workshopped and changed a little bit at council. And I would like to hear from, if a city councillor is here and then before this discussion is over and before a vote is cast. Because, I mean, I, I kind of got wind of this a couple of weeks ago and I had some concerns. Some of those concerns seemed to kind of grow legs. And then when I got the package on Thursday evening. Seeing it in black and white and, and colored pictures, uh, things kind of mutated a little bit, not necessarily for the better. Far as approving anything here. But, um, and, and just to go back to where, right in the memo, it talks about the five zones where it would be permitted. And one of them is neighborhood business. I mean, I don't like the idea of highway business because it's the, it's our commercial sector of Lewiston. It's what drives our economy. And I understand the reason you don't want it in residential. I actually agree with that wholeheartedly. And that's why when I look at neighborhood business, the word neighborhood, it doesn't say residential, but it says neighborhood. And the particular, I, I know of two lots or general areas of Lewiston. It may be limited to those two. There may be a couple more. But, um, I, I wouldn't want to see one of these facilities sitting at fifty-five old Lisbon Road. Now where anywhere from fifty to eighty-five acres, depending on who's suggesting what the acreage is. Is going to be neighborhood business. And that's not a, a place for a facility like this. So I, I would love to see N D strick, Struckin? Stricken from this, uh, at the very least. I, I just don't like it at all.
Roger, did you have something?
I kind of agree with Michael on it. You know, the thing is, you've been looking at a lot of this, you know, throughout the state now. Is this a state-run program?
Yes, yes.
State-run program?
So the, the ordinance will specify that the, you know, again, this is all just for a local license. The, the. The local municipality is looking to, to have their own license on top of the state license or state certification. So. It is required that they have a state certification in, in order to operate here. The state certification has. Very strict requirements on what they can and cannot do. Their reporting. The city is looking to piggyback on that and, and get copies of that reporting, report to the state or to the city. So, uh, there's, there's some small nuanced differences between what is done at the state and what would be done at the local level. But yes, they are. That's the long answer is they are required to be licensed by the state.
Irregardless to what's been happening in the Portland area, is this the same program that they have down here?
What's happening in the Portland area? I'm unfamiliar.
Needle exchange that they had in Portland, which they had a big problem with.
So Portland, I believe, has three current, uh, if I'm not mistaken, that I, at a minimum of three that I know of. Bangor has a couple. Augusta, I believe, has two, if not three online yet. Uh, so there, there's a handful of them all over the state. The one that I know of that has a, a, a problem, and I don't think it was, I don't know if it was this particular providers or. Process that was the, to blame, but there, there was a, an outbreak in HIV. That was in Bangor. So I'm, I'm not familiar with, you know, a, a problem or an issue right now going on in, in Portland. So I, I couldn't answer to that. I apologize.
I don't know. I just, it just baffles me how this comes about. Thing is, I have to agree with Michael. You know, the thing is, is that we open it up to that particular area. Next thing you know, it's going to be in the neighborhoods. That people and kids are in and you're going to have syringes all over the place. I mean, it's, it's, we're seeing it now. I mean, and we don't even have these programs.
Lucy, did you have any comments?
No, not any other things.
So if I may, we, we do have the, when you said we don't have these programs right now, we, we do.
We do, but yet we still have a problem with syringes being found everywhere. I mean, how do we control it? You know, you don't control it by, you know, somebody walking in and here's a syringe, go ahead and pump up. You know, and that's the thing that I'm concerned about. You know, the thing is, is yeah, you have a problem over here in the park. And they've tried to clean it up, I don't know, multiple times and nothing's happened. You still have it. So, I mean, if it goes from the city park, now you're going to go out into the neighborhoods and it's going to be out there as well. And irregardless if somebody walks out there, bikes out there, takes the bus out there, you know, somewhere along the line, they're going to toss a needle out the window. Or before they get to the, the facility, they're going to dump a needle to get a new one.
Are there incentivization programs for returning needles other than the needle exchange program? Like you return, hey, just like the bottle redemption program?
I believe Portland is, is working on that model right now. That's, that's not in this draft ordinance, so.
No, I know.
That process is not part of, but I, I think Portland is operating in that way right now. I, I don't know of, of the success or failure of it, but they are operating of it.
Yeah. I mean, I, I kind of agree as well. I, I, I'm not a big fan of opening up the, uh, the downtown. For needle exchange because I agree that the, one of the problems with Lewiston. Lewiston's image is having, uh, you know, needles strewn about. I know, I've seen. You know, I, my office is right down here on Lisbon Street. Come out, I see guys essentially catatonic on the street. You know, as I'm leaving my office, uh, and then just needles just all over the place. That's not good for business. That's not good for a community and it's not good for developing a business. So if, uh, you know, if we're going to allow it anywhere, me personally, I, I'm, I'm much more. I have a much higher preference to having it, um, in the outer, um, areas on outer Lisbon Street. Because I'm also of the opinion that you can't just say, well, you know, we're not going to have it anywhere in the city. You can't ignore the problem. You can't say, well, we're, we're not going to do anything. We're not going to. You know, have no response because that's not going to solve the health crisis. So, um, we have to have some sort of, um, some sort of creative ways to balance both. Both needs. The need of the city to be able to grow and be able to continue to attract businesses and people. But also the need to actually respond to a legitimate and scary health crisis. Particularly one that can, doesn't seem to be abating anytime soon. Uh, so I don't know, I don't know what the answer is, but.
And if I may add really quickly, I know there's quite a few questions on the, on the dais there. The, the council as part of the draft has, has really harped on, um, some guardrails, if you will, for the licensees. Being things like, um, you know, good neighbor policies. What, what exactly is going to be their good neighbor policy in terms of? Cleaning up, helping clean up, helping in the immediate area, things of that nature. So there, there are some things in the draft. That the council will, will, will want to levy against the providers to make sure that. Operationally, what you're talking about, what most of you're talking about now is the actual operations of their, of what they do. And so that they are working on some safeguards for the operations part of it. But what they're really looking for from you guys is, you know, where, like, just like you said, where, where? Where do you permit it? Where do you prohibit it? And that's, and, and I get to, to Mr. Pine's point, there's a lot of variables that come into it to help make the recommendation. And, and some of those are in the ordinance, uh, that's, that's in draft, but you know, a lot of it's not.
Zoe?
I've attended a couple of those city council meetings, um, in which this was being discussed, the workshop included. And my understanding is that in addition to providing clean and safe needles for people to use, one of the express goals of. Syringe service providers is to, um, allow people to safely dispose of needles. So I don't necessarily think that the placement of an SSP somewhere would necessarily increase the amount of needles in that area. That's sort of. Counter to the goal. Um, and so keeping that in mind, I am interested in bringing the discussion back to more of a land use perspective and not. The, yeah, the clientele.
Right. Anybody else have any other comments? Penthea?
I wondered, um, if the folks who are here, um, had anything to say about, um, the impact. On the things that Alex was describing or asking about and even, uh, impact on a butters that they've seen and how they're contending with that. Just from a land use perspective, I, I don't know if there's folk, if there's things that either any of you would want to say about that.
I did not want to open it up to public comment.
Okay.
Unless the board as a whole wanted to filter.
I would be amenable to having them give us a, a, a short, you know, not fifteen minutes, but a discussion.
Is everybody fine with that? Roger?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mike?
I'm sorry, Michael.
Oh, I had a few things that I forgot to mention the first round that I'd like to throw in. And at the end of it, I was going to say, I want to hear from the people who are here in the audience.
Sure.
But that's already been taken care of. Wanted to ask John a question about, uh, first time I met John was about six years ago and I was on the city council and we were talking about, uh, red drop boxes. Now, were those, uh, those boxes ever installed? Are they being used? Uh, I have ideas on, uh, the answers to those questions, but I wanted to hear it from you.
Yes, they are being used. As a matter of fact, after meeting with these folks, I went back and, and spoke with, uh, the police. Who keep a record. And so they, they've got a list of all of the locations, uh, going back, I believe to twenty twenty-two. I think was the year that I saw on the, on the spreadsheet. And each box, they would, they would annotate by month, how many they pulled from that box. And so that, there's a running total. So there, there are some, they do get damaged, they do get vandalized. Um, but a lot of them do fill and, and they get disposed of properly. So.
Because the discussion at the time was, uh, by instituting this and council passed it five to two. Over the objection to some people who stepped up to the podium that night. And, um, I, I look at this as coddling and enabling a bad behavior. This is why today we're at, in the position we're in. It just exacerbates with, uh, the enabling that's been taking place. And that's all I'll say on that. And I'm just, I have a question for, uh, John. I O, which district is that? Institutional office, but what, um, presides in institutional office?
Correct me. I'm going to ask the, the season planner, but I believe is the hospital in I O? The school, the school, the school is in I O, the high school, that whole area for the school.
The reason I ask is because I thought it was hospitals and it's been suggested to me, why don't we just have. Those facilities take care of this issue. It would definitely limit the places and it would be any professional setting for medical assistance and so on and so forth.
I, I would venture to guess that if the hospital wanted to be a provider, they would, they would apply for it and try to get a license. I just don't think they have the staff. So right now there's a few, you know, entities, nonprofits, what you will, that are, that are stepping up to do that work.
I have a concern when a lot, I mean, anybody can set up a social program, nonprofit, and once that starts to metastasize in a community. It, it's not a good thing. And I'm probably going to get my chance in a few minutes, but, um, so, so if somebody who is diabetic wanted to go get some free needles. They'd be able to do that. The same way somebody who's doing illicit illegal drugs.
I'm going to have to defer to the experts. So when, when they.
Just wanted to put that out before I forgot the question.
Okay.
There's nothing else.
Can I just clarify that the I O district is primarily Bates College?
Okay. So if you don't mind identifying yourself and then just speak briefly about how the, um, proposed. Exclusions areas would affect you and how it might be helpful to you. I don't know.
Happy to. Good evening. Catherine Ryder, Senior Director of Strategic Initiatives at Spurwink, formerly the CEO at Tri-County Mental Health Services. Which is eleven fifty-five Lisbon Street where I worked for thirty-four years. And I actually founded this program under a grant from Main Health Access. Foundation some five years ago. And I will tell you, in those five years, we had not one complaint in the region where we do our operations. And I would love, and so would Ernestine, to invite you all to come to a walkthrough of our program. So that we can show you what we do, how we do it, how we educate the people that we work with, how we encourage recovery at every single contact. And how we do so much more than giveaway needles. And Ernestine will talk about that in just a minute. So the program lives at eleven fifty-five Lisbon Street. People come to us on foot, in cars, on bus routes. And it is a much fuller service than just a needle exchange and a needle collection. So. I know we're short for time, so I'm going to pass it to Ernestine and ask her to give you a high-level overview of the specifics of the program.
Thank you. I'm Ernestine Peralta and currently the supervisor, uh, for the community outreach programs that we have at Spurwink, uh, located eleven fifty-five. One of them happens to be the, um, syringe exchange that we have there. I don't usually identify it as a syringe exchange because, uh, it's a full, it's a full set clinic that we offer. So we offer. A variety of, of connections and resources and, and, uh, availability for people to get help. So. The, the last thing that we really do oftentimes is, is, uh, the exchange of needles, collecting of needles and, and giving clean syringes. But predominantly what we do day to day is connecting with people who need help. And, uh, they're coming from us, from a variety of different, uh, means and, but predominantly they're there, you know, to seek people who are, um. Who are professionals, uh, in, you know, the, in harm reduction kind of clinic, uh, who are, um, you know, been in this field for quite some time. Many are also in recovery, so they have lived experience and they're willing to offer their experience, strength and hope to people that are still struggling out there. And so, uh, majority of things that we're offering are recovery coaching, which is essential to obviously people getting connected. With someone who's been there and giving, inspiring them to sort of, you know, continue to move forward and seek recovery. We have a variety of supplies that we, that we give out and have availability for people, including hygiene supplies. Nutrition supplies, wound care supplies. And, um, we have a lending library. We have resources. We have an entire room. That is dedicated to the clients that we serve, that they can come in and. that is dedicated to the clients that we serve, that they can come in and take anything that's in there that's going to be helpful to them, which predominantly are supplies to help them exist and live in the conditions that they are. But also there are treatment resources. We are in a building that we're very blessed to be part of that have a dozen or more programs. So if someone says today's the day that I would like to actually take a bigger step and connect with a treatment provider, we're able to literally walk them down the hall and get them, you know, involved and enrolled to seek that help. That's a great advantage that we have, obviously. And so I run a team, about 15 people, that are on the streets of Lewiston and Auburn and surrounding areas every single day, and they're trying to outreach the, the people that we're serving. And so many of them are making connections with people that are also coming into this clinic. And we have an outside box outside our facility as well, where any day, any time, any hour, people can seek also services and support and make connections through that box, which is, they can get supplies that way. But they can also, you know, this, we've had people that just drop off supplies. They're like, look, I cleaned up my neighborhood and whatnot. Can you please take these syringes from me? So they put them in this drop box. We give them a code. They open it up. It could be Saturday morning at 3:00 AM if they like to go ahead and leave those there. So we're kind of a full service clinic. We have three, three full times patent staff that work there. And it's a, it's, we're open nine to five Monday through Friday. And, and I obviously oversee that program, so help out with that, with those connections as well. But it's, it's critical, our idea and philosophy behind it is constant connection. So if we're giving out any kind of supplies, it doesn't matter what, what it is, even a hygiene product, it's going to last them two, three days at best. And the idea of that is to get them back in because the more that they continue to be surrounded by people in recovery and also that, you know, they are probably saying a lot of the same things each and every time they see them, sometimes that sticks and the person says today's the day, you know, and whatnot. Connection is key to, you know, to people.
You asked a specific question about what the zoning that's up here would do for our clinic. It looks like our clinic is in the white zone, so we would be able to continue operations. And I would also like to quickly share a statistic with you, and that is that when we started our program about five years ago, the trending of overdose deaths in Lewiston was just rising like a ski slope, but in the opposite direction going up. And last year, the state recorded a 16.7% reduction in overdose deaths. Here in Lewiston proper, we recorded a 28% reduction. That's almost one in three lives saved. And we truly believe that our outreach into the community and the work with people at the clinic has made a significant dent in that.
Okay, thank you.
Would you say that your purpose is more service than it is needle exchange?
Yes, sir.
Absolutely.
Hundred percent.
Then why are we going with syringe service program instead of what they actually do?
So the ordinance is geared towards licensure for the needle exchange program. So just because they do multiple things, other providers could come in and just do needle exchange. So therefore that's why the ordinance, the council is looking to do an ordinance to license those providers. That's why.
Zoe?
Or conversely, a provider who wanted to, who did provide all sorts of other services, who wanted to add a syringe exchange program would have to be licensed specifically for that. So it's not, yeah, just, just to clarify that it's not just people who want to do only the syringes necessarily.
Alex?
So just, just to be clear about this, I'm trying to link this back to what I had asked earlier. Your building on Lisbon Street, it's an office building. When you talk about, you know, the variety of people and how they get to your, your establishment, what would you say sort of is the percentage breakdown of people traveling by car, by public transportation and walking? And just sort of in a general sense of what that is?
Sure. I would say the majority are riding in cars.
Can you speak closer to the microphone just because it's being recorded?
Thank you. Majority are riding in cars to our facility and also the public transportation. So there are little on, on foot, but we are, we're pretty far out located, so that's a bit of a struggle for folks, so, but majority are coming in vehicles.
And, and then I think just, you know, I think it's sort of tangential a little bit in how I'm thinking about this, but I hear this from some of the other board members. Would you say most of the folks using the service are unhoused? Or do you have people who are, you know, in housing and, and still using substances? And then I think also to Michael's question, do you get people who are looking for needle exchange for other uses like insulin or, you know, other, you know, medical purposes?
So a few, a few aspects of that question is that we, I have a lot of folks that come in that are, they have injectables, you know, they're using medication that is an injectable medication, and they want to safely dispose of those. So they are bringing them in. They're not getting, obviously, they're not asking for, you know, clean syringes. It's not the nature of the conversation. But they are disposing of them at our facility. As well as we have had people come in, because we've had people donate, you know, insulin, syringes, you know, medical clinics, you name it, what, you know, they have. So we have those there and people have come in and it's, you know, it's been a coincidence sometimes that we have what they're looking for. So that's, you know, that has transpired as well. And the, I would say that the, the third part of your question was more of sort of what, what, where are people coming from, I guess, in a sense? I would tend to think, I mean, we, we, we are kind of a clinic where you can come in and tell me that your name is, you know, is Bugs Bunny. And I, you know, and I take that for what it is. So it's an anonymous, you know, very confidential clinic. And so if they're willing to share more information about where they're coming from, et cetera, and give that, we have, you know, we have a worksheet that we collect data when we can and when we're able to. There's a requirement as being a certified SSP in the state is to collect data, information. So we do try to do that, but they don't have to. And so there's a high percentage, yes, that are coming from an unhoused situation and whatnot. But, but we also have folks that are coming in that are, you know, working a nine to five job and, you know, and really, you know, giving to the community, but they're struggling, you know, personally with addiction. And so, but they have found a connection and no judgment in, you know, at our clinic. So they're coming in seeking that support. And, and some, and we also have a good percentage of folks that aren't coming in and aren't, they aren't coming in to get needles and they aren't walking out with needles. They're coming in purely for all the other services that we're providing. And sometimes it's purely just to sit down and talk to someone that's in recovery.
Amy, did you have anything? Okay, so you're not looking for a motion from us or anything, or a vote or anything?
I mean, I think the council is looking for guidance. So if the board has any recommendations you want to make, we'll notate that and provide it to them.
Okay, so, I mean, my feeling is just to, I'm fine with this personally. So.
So am I.
Yeah, so.
I'm angling towards accepting it as is, but if that's a city councillor, I'd like to hear from her as well.
Okay. Would you like to come up and speak if you have anything to say? Sure.
Ninety-two degrees out, so.
Yeah.
I guess I'll start off questions.
I'm councillor Sol.
Yeah, I was going.
I, I was wondering where, I mean, this is an extreme brief as opposed to probably the workshop and what's being proposed and worked. I'm just wondering, where is the council at? What's the thinking and process that went into this?
For the zoning?
For the zoning, I get, no, we're not, we don't have purview of the licensing necessarily, but I guess there's licensing issues involved in this.
Well, it started with the needle litter and we were trying to figure out how we can take care of that. So the first step was to offer a solution by going back to the one-to-one ratio. So if there's five dirty syringes that come in, you're allowed five clean. The math says that there's not going to be as many needles all over the city. So that and the disturbances with the businesses, we're having a lot of trouble with that.
In the downtown.
In the downtown. So we're trying to keep our businesses here and do what we can to keep those, it's the behaviors that, that are coming with the program that's causing a lot of the disturbances.
Do you know if the city council is thinking of anything about an incentive program to have people return syringes?
We have not discussed that. It's come up, but it's never come up as, as a topic to, to go ahead and vote on.
Yeah.
I personally don't love that idea of a program.
Why wouldn't you like that idea?
It encourages the people who, if you're just out and you see a dirty syringe and you want to pick it up, I don't know how much, I think it's like a nickel or I'm not sure how much you get for.
Oh, I was thinking like $40 a syringe.
Oh, well, sign me up, sign me up. I'm going right now. No, it, I just, you know, kids walk around the neighborhood and they want to collect bottles. They want to get, so I just see that as it can be more dangerous than, than, than good.
That's true. Anybody else have any questions?
I just wanted to share this, the, I think it's safe to say that the council is extremely pleased with the model that Spurwink is using. There hasn't been any complaints from them at all.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. So my thinking is that we simply provide a recommendation to the city council to accept this as is unless the board has any other recommendation. Alex?
I don't necessarily have a recommendation, but I would like to go on the record, based on what I heard from the folks from Spurwink, I think that this is more restrictive. It seems like what they need is general office space, something that would be suitable for medical office, things of that nature. And I think a lot of the concerns around impact to neighborhoods seem just to keep coming back to licensure, which is not in our purview. So again, sort of putting on the land use hat that I was, I was trying to put on earlier, I would, I would personally like to see something a little more permissive and have the licensure take care of the concerns around how the program's going to operate. I do hear the concerns from other members of the board that just this idea in general seems like a bad one. But that aside, just looking at what Spurwink uses in terms of a building and sort of the way their clientele are coming to them, by car, by bus, by foot, that that's very similar to other office uses. So I would prefer to see something that sort of more matches that from a purely land use perspective. But that's just my personal opinion.
Right, so they're just looking for recommendations on the zones and the buffers. Are we, as a board, are we good with the, the zones that they are proposing for this ordinance and the buffers as presented here?
Do you want me to call a roll?
Well, I mean, I just want to, it's not.
Thumbs up or thumbs down?
Yeah, thumbs up, thumbs down. Michael, do you have something before we do this?
My recommendation would be quite opposite. My thoughts on this is opposite of Alex Pines, and that's not to liberalize anything that we've seen here tonight. And of course, I would love to have a no tolerance completely across the board, but I know I'm not going to get that. Understanding where the council's at is probably the best I'm going to see, and that's why I go with the as is. I, I don't want to see any further liberalization. Probably just at the risk of messing with things, I'm not going to suggest it as a part of the motion, but I prefer IOs, as was discussed. I don't like the neighborhood business being included here, just to say. But I'm, I'm not going to mess with what's here on paper. I'm just going to support a motion to recommend as it currently stands with the council.
No, it's not a motion. It's just.
Right, it's not a motion. They're just seeking recommendation.
It's a recommendation and recommendations needs to be put into words.
Could I ask for clarification? When you talk about as is, it sounds like, Michael, you're speaking about the map that is currently in use, not the proposal. And is that what the rest of the board is talking about?
Yes.
Mark, is that what you're?
We are talking about the proposed, the proposed permitted zoning districts as well as the.
What she's saying is, when you say as is, are you saying this as is or as is?
Today.
Today, as we speak.
As presented here.
As articulated in the memo.
Yeah, just wanted to clarify.
Right.
And with everything else that we heard with respect to, and yes, licensing, because if, if we stay with the status quo, we're in a worse position than moving forward. I just think we should move forward to zero tolerance.
So the recommendation from the board is, in general, the board is in favor of these proposed permitted zoning districts as well as the promote, proposed buffer zones with a few members on the board having some qualms with it, but in general, the board is in favor of this.
Thank you.
And if I may throw one last wrinkle in, I apologize. One of the other items, and it's not in your packet because it's not verified yet with the, with the draft from the council, is one of the items that they're taking up is the ability to have mobile. So if, if Spurwink wants to have a mobile exchange, and that could be anything from going out to an encampment to, to do exchanges out there at the encampment and cleaning up the area, if you will. Does the board have, if the council agreed to mobile exchanges, would the board want to see the exact same zoning as the brick and mortar? Or would you be open to, or what, what would be your recommendations in, in those terms? Would you, would it be allowable? Now, one of the things that the council is talking about is any mobile would have to have a specific permit. So they would be permitted in addition to. So they would have to come to the council to get a permit to have a mobile operations and for time, specific times, specific locations, specific dates, things of that nature. So just wanted to put it out there to, to see where the board would, would fall in terms of a mobile exchange provider if, if one, if the council does go that way.
Are they asking where a mobile exchange provider could be located? Or are they asking where a mobile exchange provider could operate?
Both, both, so.
Meaning I can't, I can't drive into the red areas and do an exchange in the red areas?
So it, it's been discussed, things like prohibiting it from public space whatsoever to include streets. So now you have to be on private property. That's one of the items that we're throwing out there. Allowing it anywhere in the city or just keeping it to the red, you know, the, how you have it for the brick and mortar. So those are the, those are the topics that have kind of been discussed. Again, it hasn't, it hasn't been finalized. It hasn't even been, you know, voted on. It's kind of, kind of going both ways, so we don't know. That's why we didn't talk about it. But it's, it's something that should be, you know, looked at because I know when we go and bring it before them, they're going to ask if we brought it up to the planning board and like to see what you guys think.
Well, I'm going to start with Zoe first.
I would say my opinion is that it could be allowable anywhere, provided that a good case was made for the need, why it needed to be in that location, and that would be determined on a case-by-case basis with the, you know, with the licensing application.
Yeah, and that would be part of the permitting application that they have talked about.
Yeah, I would, I would say the same with the risk benefit. I do wonder about sort of a, maybe a higher standard around where the buffer zones are. I mean, there'd have to be a darn good reason for, for that kind of location perhaps.
In terms of how, you know, again, going back to the land use thing, so what, in what ways does the planning board, through our code, already regulate other mobile operators like food trucks and things like that? I would look towards staff that if we have any proposed language, that I'd like to see some consistency with how we approach that because, you know, it's a mobile business. It's a mobile activity. And I just want to make sure that what we're doing here on the board matches what we do for other.
Amy?
Yes, I agree with Alex. I would have no limitation on where it could go, but it's got to be consistent with our other laws.
Lucy?
I agree with Alex and Amy. I'd like to see it everywhere or, you know, I'd like to see it everywhere or, you know, like Zoe, you know, on a time and place basis, but being consistent with what we're doing with food trucks or things like that.
Michael?
What about the buffers? Keep the buffers in place?
Well, hang on a second. Let me, let me finish with Michael and Roger first.
I say hell no. This is enabling illicit, illegal drugs. And we're going to put this on wheels, basically do, maybe it's not the right phrase, but house visits, house calls. Obviously, it's not to somebody's house, but it's akin to doctors doing house calls as in the old days. So hell no. We, we don't need to create this image for Lewiston. We don't need to look like some of these really ghetto-ish big cities and burbs. So hell no.
Okay, Roger?
I think keeping within the buffers, the red zone that we have and keeping the buffers the way they are.
Okay. I don't really have an opinion on that, actually. I'm not really understanding the concept, so just driving out of there like somebody is just, has a house and then they like, okay, well, I'm going to go out and do a need, go.
Well, the state does have licensed mobile units, so.
Right, so, but I'm saying that they would be based out of their house or a, any, any place within the city according, you know, under Your guy's concept, right? They could be placed, based anywhere in the city, right? And then just drive wherever they needed to go? Is that what, is that what your concept is? Is that, is that how you're thinking of it?
When, when you say, are you looking at me?
Any one of you where you said you would allow it anywhere?
Yeah, I mean, I'm kind of trying to think of corollaries, you know, food trucks were mentioned, but maybe like a blood drive or something, you know? You could have a blood drive at your business or you could, I know it's just like a health service that's being provided in a neighborhood that maybe there's not, there's a need there, but less accessibility for that neighborhood. So it's like today, on Tuesday, whatever date, we're going to bring the mobile unit here, people can get tested for HIV, people can
Yeah, I'm not sure if I agree that it's, well, I mean, personally, I'm not sure if I agree that it's the same thing as a food truck or a blood drive, right? I don't, I can't imagine that, that the general public would
But operationally, I think you would think of it that way. Like they're not going to somebody's house to operate out of. They're operating out of a mobile vehicle. So if it's a, if it's a van, it's setting up somewhere, not in a, not in a house, not in a business. They're, they're operating out of the, the mobile vehicle.
So people go in the vehicle?
It could be any number. It could be a bread truck. I'm assuming, I haven't seen any around here.
I'm not understanding
But from, from what I've seen and done the research, again, the experts could probably tell you better than I could. But you think of, think of vans, think of bread trucks, think of, I mean, it could be, it could be a, a car. I mean, if they were going out and had a bag full of, of syringes to give out and to accept, you know, they have the receptacles to, to receive the dirty syringes, you know, if they're going out to an encampment, they're literally parking and walking out to the encampment to go help the people out in the encampment, pick up the needles, you know, accept the needles, put them in the containers, bring them back to the vehicle. And you, you heard already talking about, they have, they have their own outreach programs that they're doing now, and so similar, you know? That's what I would think of.
It's just exchanging needles, it's not
Well, it could be their other services that they do, but this license is for the, the exchange part of it.
This is akin to a drug deal, except it's the paraphernalia as opposed to the drug itself. It all comes together. You're enabling one way or the other.
Okay. So
Bad, bad policy.
Okay, Amy?
I just want to add the reason, one reason I would support the mobile is because I do feel like the red region is pretty restrictive and it could sort of evolve over time that there's a specific sort of hub where it would be super helpful to have a mobile unit come, say, once a week, whatever it might be. But it's a little bit of a, an escape valve, right, for having things so far out that it, I view it as a good alternative, given that it's licensed, that it's at a specific location at a specific time.
I have alcoholics in the family. Maybe we should have an exchange, bring out your bottle and get a bottle.
So did you need anything from us on that?
I, I think I got, it sounds like the majority of the, the board is in favor of keeping the buffers but allowing mobile everywhere.
Pretty much anywhere, yeah. That's, with the exception of one strong no.
I
If that's the overall motion, I'm changing my, my view to no. Might as well go back to what I thought three days ago.
So just to make it clear, I think I would, I haven't really made, my comments weren't to say, you know, one way or another with mobile units. I would, I would find it useful to have something to actually work with, you know, just sort of like, do I like the idea of mobile units in general? Hard to say. It's a very general topic. I think for me, I would want to make sure, again, that our rulemaking, whether it's a mobile unit or a stationary, you know, bricks and mortar, is that we are looking at it from a land use perspective, that in the case of a mobile unit, which is a little more decoupled from land use, right, because it's moving around, that we approach whatever regulation we do there in the same way that we approach other mobile businesses, just so we have some consistency. And then, you know, specifically on the topic of, you know, where are we going to allow these? I think the buffer zones are fine. I think, given what we heard from Spurwink, I would personally like to see, you know, zones that have the type of facility, so that, you know, a place that we'd allow a medical officer or something similar to be able to operate. And I think that the, the operational issues should be covered by licensure, just to make it very clear for, for the minutes, because I, I did pick up some folks saying like, "Oh, Alex said, you know, and anywhere and anything." And I want to make it very clear that I'm looking at this, yeah, that I'm looking at this from having good code on the books and making sure that we are looking at this from a land use perspective, because, you know, we spent a lot of time as a community working through the question of where we would allow homeless shelters, and we ended up with code on the books where we put a lot of licensure language into land use and, and eventually had to sort of undo that and move it around again. So this is just a reminder that when we're going into this process, you know, regardless of how restricted the licensure is or the land use aspect, that we keep those in their respective courts.
Okay.
I agree.
So I think, I think generally you're getting, a majority of the board is in agreement with that perspective. Yes?
Okay.
Okay. Did we have anything else? A report on recent de minimis change to a prior approved plan at Five Memorial Drive, Memorial Avenue School for changes to building footprint and grading?
Yes. And these are just really notifications on the agenda that that happened. And then there was also a minor change to the DeWitt project at 4060 Pine Street.
So it's just a notification?
Just a notification, yeah, that your, your chair signed those plans.
Okay. And the motion to adopt the June 9th minutes?
I have, I have a, other business, just, just to let
I'm sorry, other business from anyone else?
Yes. I just wanted to let everybody know, I won't be here in September because I'm having knee surgery on the 26th of August, so.
Good luck.
Me too.
Figure your calendar.
Does anybody else have any other business? Okay.
I will make the motion to adopt the minutes from the June 9th meeting.
Did anybody have any changes to those minutes that they haven't already sent? Okay.
Second.
All right, any, okay.
Roger Dupree?
Yes.
Michael Markott? Lucy Bisson, yes. Mark Roy?
Yes.
Amy Smith?
Yes.
Alexandra Pine?
Yes.
Henthia Burns?
Yes.
Okay, motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Up and away. All right.
Okay.
Okay, good job.
And John?
Good job.
I have a question for you.
Oh, thank you. John, can I actually trick you to do that?
Sorry for running in a couple of times. I just felt like I had to.
Have a good night. You too. Thank you.